Let's call this meeting of the Caver School Community to order on August 27th. It is 7:03. Will you all please join me for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as we have a right to speak.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to comments from the general public. Anybody in the audience who can make a comment? Anybody on Zoom if you'd like to have a comment on Zoom Scott, do you have a policy for that?
I think it may come on Zoom. They should text or they should chat to the host.
Chat to the host if you'd like to make a comment.
If you're parked a space in Zoom, if you just make sure to keep your video off, that would greatly appreciate it. And it keeps our community about speaking.
Okay, so we'll give that a minute. See if Meredith comes up with anybody who wants to speak. Seeing none? All right, seeing none. Then we'll move on to comments on the EAPC. I believe they're remote.
Good evening, EAPC. It's Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Thank you, Gary. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'll keep my comments brief tonight before turning it over. EAPC's comments over to Tammy. But I'd like to remind everyone that the members of the Education Association of Plymouth and Caver are professionals. I believe that needs to be kept in mind when making the decision of where educators can teach from the one remote day of the hybrid schedule. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Tammy.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to recognize the tremendous amount of work our school community has been engaged in throughout the summer in order to provide what is best for our children this upcoming school year. It's been an amazing testament to the amount of care and pride we have for the children of our community. I also would like to recognize how our administration, led by our superintendent, Scott Neave, has provided the much-needed support to our teachers and ESPs with high risks or those members living with a family member with high risk. Many of these members have reported very positively about the respect and consideration they have all been given. It is because of these responses and interactions that we know we are valued. As we enter the school buildings next Monday, there will be varying levels of anxiety due to the real risks and unknowns of what might occur. For the school committee, I would like to leave you one last plea. Many of us that work as educators in Caver strongly believe in the importance of having the option to work within the building on remote days. Many educators worry about the health and safety risks of coming in and have a difficult time understanding why it may be mandated when they can just as effectively teach from home. Coming into the buildings on Wednesdays, staff will be sharing bathroom spaces in other common areas 20% more than if they perform their jobs on remote days from home. We will be put into an uncomfortable situation, having to decide where and how to meet in person with our colleagues when we could easily and safely communicate through Zoom. We've become very good at this since March. Many educators will be put into a difficult situation of choosing whether to bring their children to school with them, where they will not have the same comfort level or resources they would have at home, or using daycare that is now inconsistent and difficult to find, which could shut down at any time, making the educator less able to devote 100% of their energies to their students. Educators will require to call in sick due to the numerous symptoms they could experience, when if they had the choice to work at home on these remote days, they wouldn't have to worry about calling in sick that day and having a substitute. But most important, having this option provides an equitable solution. In education, we all know that paying equal does not always mean that a thing is equitable. Not all classroom space, office space, and buildings provide the same working environments. Some classroom spaces do not have windows. Some are shared with other staff. Some spaces are no bigger than closets. Having the option to work in the building during remote days is the equitable solution. In closing, I'd like to recognize the administration one more time. Yesterday, our new hires met for orientation day. The administration went out of their way to set up space outdoors in front of the building. The mentor team set up eight long tables with cranberry-colored tablecloths. It was a beautiful morning. Christine Cabral, our Caver Middle High School vice principal, was completely cognizant of everyone's comfortable level and was very compassionate when addressing everyone in attendance. I truly can say I feel better about entering our building on Monday because of her. Thank you, Christine. It is so important that we all listen to each other's perspectives before coming to a final conclusion for our reopening this fall. We all appreciate being treated with respect, and as the professionals, we have worked so hard today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Andy. Andy, before you go, I was getting messages that the people watching on Area 58 can't have no sound, so.
They can't hear our sound?
There's no sound coming through on the TV. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
All right. Okay. So we're going to move on to approval of minutes from July 7th and July 9th, open session minutes.
I move to approve the July 7th, 2020, open session minutes and the July 29th, 2020, open session minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Does anybody have any corrections, comment, concern for July 7th?
Well done, Gina. That was, there was a lot in those, so good job.
All right. Hearing none. This is a roll call. So Stephanie?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen?
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
James?
James O'Brien, aye.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
Andy Cotterelli, aye. Okay, I would entertain a motion for the July 29th minutes.
Aye. I wrapped them both.
Oh, did you? I thought you did them separately. Okay, I'm sorry. My mistake. All right, then we'll move to reports from the superintendent.
Okay, we'll start with our personnel updates. So we have had some movement in personnel since our last meeting. We have some new hires. Jerry Ford, as Tammy mentioned yesterday, we had our new teacher orientation yesterday, so some of these staff members were at our new teacher orientation, which really was a wonderful event. So I thanked Christine Cabral as well as our leader of our mentor program. So it's realized Jerry Ford is a math teacher at the middle high school. Julia Whalen as a .5 biology teacher at the middle high school. Karen Bakalupi as a foreign language teacher at the middle high school. Jessica Foley as the new school nurse at the middle high school. And David Aruder as a technology engineering teacher at the middle high school. Since last week, we also have had some retirements and some resignations. So we've had Cheryl Dolan from Food Services. Joe Salamon, as a custodian, has notified us he's going to retire beginning January 8th, 2021. Diana Denon as an ESP at the elementary school. Marissa Elgart as an ESP at the elementary school. Donna Butts, ESP library aide, has decided to retire. Aaron Wade, ESP at the middle high school. Janice Bennett, a classroom teacher at the elementary school for many, many years, has made a decision to retire prior to the start of school. Margaret Osment is an ESP at middle high school. Brenda Roberts is an ESP at the middle high school. And Nancy Frazier has retired as an ESP. So we do have a couple of staff members there who have made a decision to retire. You know, obviously, I want to talk about each individual circumstance, but those staff members have been people who have been longstanding members of our community. We'll have to do some more formalized recognition of each of them as we get into the school year. So I guess I just want to at least mention all three of them again. That's Joseph Salamon, Janice Bennett, and Nancy Frazier. And Janice has been with us for a long time as an elementary teacher. And so we wish them all good luck in their retirement and decisions they make.
We certainly do. Okay, we'll move on to the update on the reopening plan.
I wanted to begin this part of the presentation with just a thank you to the entire school community. So this includes everybody, parents, community members, teachers, administrators. And the thank you really is around all the difficult conversations and really even the school community members, I shouldn't say even, the school community members as well, that, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of challenging conversations that's gone around this topic, and everybody has strong opinions. But I think people have been very respectful in all of the conversations I've had. So in the past, really all summer, or really over the last few weeks, I've had a lot of communications with parents, staff members, members of the administration, the school committee. And though we may not all agree, and we may not, I think everybody has been tremendously respectful of everybody's opinion, I can't tell you how many conversations have started with someone saying to me, "I appreciate the challenges that the school committee faces. I appreciate the challenges teachers are going to face. I appreciate the challenges the administration's going to face," you know, whatever that phrase happens to be. And then they say, you know, "I have some ideas. I have some thoughts. I have some questions. I have some comments." But every conversation has been just, I don't know what other word to use than respectful. And in the end, we may not always agree, but I appreciate the respectful nature that everyone's approached us with. And I believe that that gives me a sense of feeling supported in the community. And so at the new mentor training yesterday, and something that I always say in the interview process, is I always say, you know, I'm beginning my 28th year in the community of Caver, working in different roles. And in that time, one of the things I've always been impressed with is I do feel like the community supports the school system. And over 28 years, there's always ups and downs. There's always financial difficulties. There's always crisis for different reasons or different levels. But in the big picture, I've always promoted the concept that the community of Caver supports the school. And I think that everything that's happened over the summer is just another indicator of that. So I just wanted to thank the entire community for its support as we go through and get ready for this upcoming school year.
Very nice.
So as an overview, I think, you know, there are a lot of topics here that we still don't have all the answers for. And I'm going to talk a little bit about maybe some timelines of when information's going to go out to parents on specific topics. But one area I really wanted to focus on tonight in kind of the update for the reopening plan was the discussion about the numbers of students and teachers who selected or requested to work remotely. So I'll bring up that information, and then we can talk about it a little bit and how we're going to approach, you know, working with these students and families. You know, so we've done a breakdown by grade level, what we've currently had for requests for remote. Hold on a second. Find my middle ground here. Push. So at this time, we've had 20 kindergarten students, 24 first grade, 24 second grade, 31 in third grade, 21 in fourth grade, 11 in fifth grade, 12 in sixth grade, 11 in seventh grade, 10 in eighth grade, 6th and 9th, 9th and 10th, 5th and 11th, 7th and 12th. And then in terms of teachers and ESPs, we've had six elementary teachers request some sort of remote assignment, three middle high school teachers, three elementary ESPs, and four middle high school ESPs. So in total number of students, it's 180. Out of the staff, approximately 1,600 students comes up to about a little over 11%, almost 12% of the population. But obviously, there's a focus there at the elementary level. And we talked at the last meeting, I know there's been a lot of discussion within the community about the concept of an educational platform. We keep using that phrase a lot. And in our last meeting, I said, "Some of this is really dependent upon the numbers. How does it work out numbers-wise?" And looking at these numbers, it clearly supports that we would be able to offer Caver teachers to be our remote teachers in grades K through 7. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit. 6th and 7th is going to be a little bit of a variation. Definitely K through 5, you know, the class number is, that's a class. So we're going to be able to take one of our classroom teachers, we have six classroom teachers at each grade level, make them a remote teacher, and have them take the responsibility of implementing the DESI standards and the Caver curriculum with those students who are remote. And that will leave an appropriate number of students in each grade level for the five teachers that are remaining. So that is the plan at this time going forward, is that for those students in kindergarten through fifth grade who are selected to be remote, they will have a Caver teacher. In terms of putting this information out to parents, that's going to happen next week. So next week, each parent will be notified from the elementary school of who the remote teachers are going to be and who their classroom teachers are going to be. We're also going to send out student schedules at the middle high school. So next week, everyone will get that information in terms of schedules and teachers. Now, I have to, for the elementary parents, they have to be cognizant of, you know, if we took a remote teacher out at the end of the year on the report cards, every student had a teacher for this year identified. The reality is some of those teachers may change. Ultimately, if we take an example, if I was supposed to be your third grade teacher, but now I'm going to be the remote teacher, and you haven't selected to be remote, you're staying in the hybrid, and obviously, I'm no longer going to be your third grade teacher. And then that has a cascading effect. So we've really had to redistribute the students. We try to develop new cohorts, new classes, and that's what the administration's been doing since our meeting and since we've already gone to the hybrid model. And that's the other thing I want to point out. I really want to thank the community. People were very extremely responsive in terms of getting information back to us. So we asked people to fill out a transportation form. We asked people to fill out a remote request form. We asked people to fill out a form for a hybrid, I mean, for a hardship request to change their cohort from either the Monday-Tuesday group to Thursday-Friday group. And people were very responsive to that. We were able to meet all the hardship requests, so they've all been incorporated. And, but I just want parents to know, especially at the elementary school, that there's a chance when you get the information next week about who your student's teacher is, that it might be different than the student's teacher who had been assigned at the end of the school year, just as we've made all these adjustments. Any questions on K through 5, because then I'll talk a little bit about the middle high school.
What's the approximate class size per cohort, you think?
Ruby, I don't know if you have the numbers?
Approximately, the hybrid in-person is approximately raised from like 18 to 21.
So the in-person class, so the in-person classes are going to raise 18 to 21, depending on the grade level. And then obviously, you're splitting that in half based on the cohort. Now, the cohorts didn't all balance exactly in terms of names. We tried to make them shift, and then we also made the hardship requests. So as you start doing some of those things, it may not be, you know, if your class is 18, it may not be exactly 9 and 9. It could be 11 and 7. It could be 10 and 8. But we tried to make it as close as we possibly can. And I don't believe, Ruby, correct me if I'm wrong, that right now we see any class on the day that you're in the hybrid being over 12.
Bill, some things we do have to.
Okay, so 13. I thought it was 12. So we don't have a number of, any class over 13 within the hybrid model.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there any?
Just, see, if we could just go back just for the Zoom audience, if we could identify ourselves. I know I called on you, but.
And actually, bring the microphones right into you, since they have problems already here.
Okay. I was just curious, grades 3 through 5, if there were going to be any issues. So with one class going remote, what does that do to the teaming model?
So in grades 3, 4, and 5, one teacher is going to be standalone, so they're going to teach the entire curriculum, and then the other four teachers will be two two-person teams in grades 3, 4, and 5. At the middle high school, in grades 6 through 12, in grades 6 and 7, what we're going to do is we're going to do a hybrid model for the, for remote. And I probably shouldn't say that because that's really going to confuse people. But we have a certified English teacher who's requested to be remote, who has been a middle school English teacher, who, what that person's going to do is we're going to combine 6th and 7th grade. So those 12 and 11 kids, making a class of 23. The middle school English teacher is going to do their primary instruction, live instruction in English, social studies, like a humanities approach in 6th and 7th grade. For math and science, those students would pick up an ingenuity course, which will be supported by the English teacher. So we're going to have one Caver teacher taking responsibility for those 13 students in a remote setting, providing them some live instruction in her area of specialty, and then also supporting the students in some other classes that they would take through ingenuity. So that's why I call the hybrids, a little bit of a mix. And then our intention is in grades 8 through 7, that student, sorry, 8 through 12, that students will be selecting courses through ingenuity and will be supported by Caver staff members in completing their coursework. But I want to take a minute to describe what plenty are doing in grades 6 and 7. So K through 7 will have some direct instruction from a middle, from a Caver teacher. 8 through 12 will be ingenuity with support. And I'm going to call Mike Schultz because he raised his hand. So he must, he might have a piece of information he wants to add to that piece.
Just then, we're looking at a similar model for 8th grade based on a recent teacher to remote. So we may be able to pull up a similar 8th grade model like we're doing in 6th and 7th grade potentially. We're still working that out.
Yeah, so that, I, okay, thanks, Mike, for the update. So any questions on kind of the update in terms of those who selected remote and what our approach is? And like I said, I focused the presentation a little bit on that this evening because I know that was a major topic of discussion from the committee and from the community in terms of how we were approaching that.
All set? Okay. All set?
Thank you.
In terms of just some other items, you know, we're also continuing to finalize plans for a hybrid model, including and not limited to transportation, which I think Brad's going to talk a little bit later on in his budget presentation, is going to touch on that a little bit. Drop off and pickup at each building, student schedules, how lunch is going to work, movement around the buildings. And what our goal is, is actually each building is working on a website, it's called a Google site. And they're going to release that Google site to parents hopefully next week. And the Google site's going to be a nice informative piece of breaking it down into a website with almost tabs. This is what the nurse's office is going to look like and protocols around the nurse. This is what the lunchroom is going to look like, and this is how lunch is going to work. And so a family, because there's just so much information, we felt that the website approach would be better, a better approach than necessarily giving them a 30-page Word document and saying, "Okay, go to the website, click on a link, click on a tab. If you want to learn about what's happening specifically in that area." Our goal is for those to be live and up and active and sent out to parents hopefully by the end of next week. You know, we have a meeting scheduled for September 10th as a committee. You know, we bring those to the committee to view as well that night, even though it's already gone out to parents. And, but we're also going to bring the handbook change that night because we are going to do addendums to the handbook, which mirrors some of those same policies, and bring those to the committee to approve that evening. So just know all that works in progress. This week, I sent out an email to the community, kind of giving people a timeline that, you know, schedules and teacher assignments will be out next week. Hopefully, these sites will be up and active next week and out to parents to gain all this information on all of these topics. Bus routes, honestly, bus routes probably will not be available until the week of September 8th or 9th. You know, you are taking all that information, we're building the bus routes, so people are going to have to be a little patient with us on that, but that information will be coming out. And we're still finalizing some stuff around lunches. And I said Brad's actually going to talk a little bit about that when he gets it to the budget presentation. But I just wanted the community to know that all this work has all been happening, and I can understand why people are looking for that information. I just ask for their patience as we go through it, and I think people will get a lot of information next week. So that's kind of my update on where we are in terms of our reopening plan.
Got it.
Jennifer Pratt, quick question. And so I'm pretty sure the answer is going to be that information will be coming next week, but the biggest overwhelming question that I've received from the community is wanting to know some sort of idea of the structure for remote days. And so I just want to, I guess, ask or confirm, like, do we know when details specifically on that will be coming out? Because by far and large, that is the question I've received the most from people.
Yeah, I think that's the information we can definitely get out next week as well. You know, in the reopening plan, there's a general structure for the remote days in each building, at the middle high school and at the elementary school. It exists there, but I understand that that template that's in the plan is more of a template, especially for the elementary students, where they're going to be receiving remote support. So they're going to have, they got an instructor, they're going to have a hybrid remote instructor who's providing them instruction on Thursdays and Fridays. Though, they're going to have to get some specific information from those teachers about what time those lessons are going to take place and when they, so yes, all that information will be coming out with plenty of it. And then the full remote days are going to be, they're going to be half-school days. So, you know, there's a half-day schedule for the middle high school, and students are going to follow their bell schedule for the half-day schedule. And at the elementary school, it's the morning, they're going to have a half-day schedule where there'll be a decent amount of live instruction. So they can kind of block off that Wednesday, you know, the morning period, you know, 7:30 to 11 at the middle high school, 8:00 to 11:30, 8:30 to probably 11:30, 12 at the elementary school. But I can understand that the Thursday-Fridays is a little more nuanced than, you know, a real schedule of when the live lessons will be.
Yeah, I think, my sense is that people are trying to figure out, you know, childcare options, and they're trying to figure out, you know, if their children need access to a computer like all day, or, you know, I think that's more of like what they're trying to figure out. So I just wanted to put out there that that is by far what people are asking. My second question, and this may come up later for Brad, is I've gotten a lot of questions regarding Chromebooks and availability and if, and I know we've said we've purchased enough, but there was a delay, and so.
No, we're good. I can answer that question. We're going to be in shape. We're going to be able to distribute Chromebooks to every student in kindergarten through 12th grade. There'll actually be a schedule coming out. That distribution is going to take place the week of September 8th. I think we actually set it up that the elementary school is doing September 8th and 9th, and the middle high school is doing September 10th and 11th. That'll be coming out with the information that comes home with. At the elementary school, I know it's in the letter that talks about a teacher's teacher assignments. The middle high school will build it into the Google site. But I can say that elementary distribution will be the 8th and 9th, following a schedule, and middle high school 10th and 11th, following a schedule.
Excellent. That's great news. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Scott, some questions that I've received are around the first day of school being a remote day. Is there, will there be information coming out as to what that day is going to look like? I've heard that question a lot.
Yes, we're going to, obviously, we have to tell people where to log into, how to log in. So one of the things we're going to do, we actually thought about that in terms of Chromebook distribution, that while we're distributing the Chromebooks, we're going to make sure everyone knows their login. And we've talked about that and having a process, especially for the younger kids. You know, the older kids, a lot of them still have their Chromebooks because we didn't collect them at the end of the year, so they already have their device. But especially, you know, the kindergarten, first graders, so they're going to actually get login information. And I think in my mind, it would make sense with that Chromebook distribution, we might talk a little bit about that first day, Wednesday, of when you should be logged in, where are you going to go. And the goal of that day is to be a little bit of a training for the students. It's going to be a combo of kind of introduction. You know, obviously, you want to, it's always hard to meet someone for the first time in a remote setting, so a little bit of introducing yourself. But then a little bit to talk about, this is what it's going to look like when you come to school tomorrow, or this is what it's going to look like when you come to school on Monday, in terms of some of the health and safety protocols. We're going to do some trainings for parents as well, so the administration is committed to do that the week prior to school. But I think it would be good for the teachers to have a little bit of discussion from the kids about that. So that first day, that remote day, would be a conversation around introduction, you know, meet and greet a little bit, and then a little bit of when we come into school, these are some of the things, these are the key things you should know and be prepared for. So that's kind of the vision for that first day remote. And we realize we have to get a schedule out to people on how to access the Zooms and all that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And just to add on to that, too, there's going to be no Chromebook insurance coverage here for parents. So the district is actually going to absorb that through CARESAC money. So there's no cost for Chromebook insurance for at least this school year.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Anybody else have any comments or concerns on the reopening? Scott, are you done with that?
I have nothing else. I'm ready to go on to the next topic. If you're ready.
Well, let's do that, then.
Okay.
Fall sports.
So since we last met, three guidance documents have come out from the Department of Education and/or the Mass Department of Health, or the MIAA, or those groups working together to release joint recommendations. So I want to spend a little time on each of them. So the first one was fall sports. Last week, the MIAA and DESI released guidance for the upcoming sports season. The guidance places sports into three categories, and it actually is aligned with the EEA guidance, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, which is kind of overseeing this work. work. And I'm gonna, I'm actually pulling the guidance document out, I'm gonna read some things right from the guidance. My guidance binder is getting too big. I need a second, I can't open and close, I need a second guidance binder. So anyhow, I digress. So they, they've categorized, categorized all sports into three levels. The first is low risk, and I'll read right from the guidance. Low-risk sports and recreational activities are characterized by: sports or activities that can be done with social distancing and no physical contact, or sports or activities that can be done individually. The list of examples are, and obviously we don't have all these sports, but I'll read those as examples, tennis, pickleball, swimming, playing catch, Disney, disc golf, golf, individual biking, surfing, horsebacking, individual sailing, fishing, hunting, motorsports, gymnastics, cross-country, and individual improve. Moderate-risk sports and recreational activities are characterized by: sports or activities that involve intermittent, close proximity, or limited incidental physical contact between participants. Examples are baseball, softball, crew sailing, track and field, swimming teams, volleyball, dance class, fencing, field hockey, girls lacrosse, and soccer. High-risk sports, recreational activities characterized by: the requirement of the substantial likelihood of routine, close, and/or sustained proximity, or deliberate physical contact between participants, and a high probability of respiratory particles being transmitted between participants. The examples are football, wrestling, rugby, basketball, lacrosse, ice hockey, competitive cheer, martial arts, boxing, and paired figure skating. So at this time, sports in the low and medium-risk categories have been approved for play following the EEA guidance. And so, but then you have to kind of talk about what, what are these modifications of play? And I'll give some examples of the modifications of play. So modified, modified play can include staggered starts, eliminating deliberate contact, minimizing intermittent contact. It talks about the idea of competitions outdoors, and the number of players that can be involved, and the number of people who can participate in watching. So no more than 25 players on a playing surface at any time for any team sport, no more than 50 people, including players, coaches, referees, facility and activity workers, on-site if you're outside. So they're saying, and then what's gonna happen, and this hasn't come out yet, the MIAA is gonna release specific guidelines for specific sports that are in the moderate-risk category. So they're gonna talk specifically about in, in soccer, how can you eliminate deliberate contact? In soccer, how can you possibly minimize intermittent contact? Because soccer is a medium-risk sport, so under the guidance, soccer could be played this fall. But they're gonna establish guidelines of, we can play soccer, but you have to play it in this way. So some rules modifications. You know, I think, I know one of the things they're talking about, I'll give one small example, is they're eliminating the throwing is a possible rules modification. So the MIAA hasn't released that list yet to my knowledge, but believe that they are gonna be coming out then next week to say, here's, here's the modifications that need to be made on those medium-risk sports to have them be allowed to play this fall. High-risk sports cannot be played. So we do offer two high-risk sports, which is football and competitive cheer. So we will not be able to have a fall football season, we will not be able to have a fall competitive cheer season, under the current guidance, the current guidelines. But what the MIAA is proposing is what they're calling a floating season, or a fourth season, or a second fall season. I've heard they call different things, which would be kind of in-between winter and spring sports, and they're hoping that at that point, the high-risk sports might have the opportunity to play based upon the progress of the pandemic. So that, that's the goal. So right now, no football, no cheerleading. Our other sports that we offer here, we, we could offer. I will say that there is some discussion happening within the league. So these are the state guidelines and the MIAA guidelines. Obviously, individual leagues can make other decisions. There is some discussion within the league looking at each of these sports, because some, some schools have established policies of no inside play. So for example, our major inside sport right now is volleyball that we offer in the fall. So I'm not saying there's not gonna be volleyball, I'm not saying there is gonna be volleyball, I'm just saying there's been some discussion about it. And we actually have a, we have a meeting coming up with the social superintendent tomorrow, actually focused on fall sports. The AD's been meeting regularly, we're waiting for the MIAA to call their guidance. So but as of right now, the only sports we'd be saying we would not be able to offer this fall would be football and cheerleading. Now, the other caveat that I want to throw out, because I know this came up in our last discussion, in the, in the, in the, the MIAA guidance, it does say, well, sorry, the DESI guidance, not the MIAA guidance, the DESI guidance and the commissioner has stated that if, moving myself around, that if a school district did make a determination to go to remote at any time, it would take a vote of the, the school committee would be required to vote on whether or not to continue sports participation. And that decision would be made at the local level. So with any vote to go to remote, the school committee would also have to look at whether they were gonna continue to offer sports that were being offered in the hybrid or full-in-person model. So that, that is the current guidance on fall sports. I don't know if there's any questions about fall sports.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, unpopular question. Has there been conversations around Triple-E in sports as well?
There, there, there has not been conversations around Triple-E except for, you know, we would always follow the guidelines, this is something we, unfortunately, it's something we do too often in COVID. So last year, we had a Triple-E issue, and we had to meet all requirements, we moved all of our games to afternoon games, or so, weekend games, you know, we didn't do anything after dusk, and obviously that's the situation right now. So any fall sports that we would offer, we'd offer following the guidelines established by the COVID Board of Health in terms of Triple-E.
Anybody else? A comment, concern? Seeing none? Okay, moving on.
Okay, moving on to the flu vaccine. I know this also generated a lot of conversation over the last few weeks. The state of Massachusetts now requires all students in grades K through 12 who are enrolled as students in school to have a flu vaccine by December 31st. The guidance applies to all students, whether they are learning in a remote, hybrid, or in-person model. So ultimately, it is, they're, they're tying this into the other vaccine mandates. So there are other vaccine mandates that the school district follows. There's a series of vaccines students got that before entering school, by seventh grade, I believe by 10th grade, and this is just gonna become part of that mandate. It becomes a school's responsibility to follow up on to ensure that people have their vaccine. We have not established a process yet for how we're gonna be collecting this information, probably very similar to how we collect all our other vaccine information, is we ask parents to turn it in, so that once you go and get the vaccine, I'm sure you'll get something in writing from your provider who does that, whether it's a clinic, or CVS, or your doctor, to say that you've had that vaccine. And then ultimately, like other vaccines, and we'll see how this plays out, they're saying the school district does have really the responsibility to hold students out of school who do not get vaccinated. So that's kind of the update on, on the flu vaccine.
Okay. Stephanie?
Stephanie Clardy. Is there a timeline on when people have to have the vaccine by? I know that they can opt out for religious reasons.
I should've mentioned that.
But is there a date?
Like all other vaccines, people can opt out for a medical condition certified by their doctor, or for religious reasons. So if they put something in writing that they have a religious objection to getting the flu vaccine, they are able to opt out. And the timeline on that would be similar to the timeline to complete the vaccination, which would be December 31st. So by December 31st, we'd be working for someone to notify us that they're getting, they're looking for an exemption, or that they've had the vaccine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anybody else have a question, comment?
Just my own personal comment on this, I'm, I know we require other vaccinations for students, but I personally am against this. I know this comes from the state, we can't change it now from here, but for, for a required inoculation for something that has a 45% effectiveness rate, and, you know, it only goes to be effective on one or two strains, for multiple strains that go around the world. I don't, I mean, I, I understand why they're doing it, to keep symptoms down, to keep schools open for COVID, but I don't see how one is related to the other, but that's just my own personal comment on that. Okay, moving on to close contact, staying home when sick.
Yeah, so, and this, this one I actually want to pull up, and I'll read the document to you, not that I need to read it to you, but I want to go through it in a little bit of detail. There was some concern that DESI and the Mass Department of Public Health guidance were contradictory about defining close contact, staying home with sick, and defining who needs to quarantine. So in response to that, they've actually put out a joint document. So the document I'm gonna show you is from both the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health, to provide clarity to communities on what the rules are around close contact, what is the definition of close contact, and when do you have to stay home with sick, and what, how you can return to school. So we'll start with definition of, of a close contact. If a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19, their close contacts will be defined as only those who've been within six feet of distance of the individual for at least 15 minutes while the person was infectious. The infectious period begins two days prior to the symptom onset. If someone is asymptomatic, the infectious period is considered to begin two days prior to the collection of their positive test. While previous, while previous guidance said that all students in an elementary classroom would be defined as close contacts, the new guidance provides a narrower definition of a close contact which mirrors a DPH guidance. In essence, what they're saying is, and I think this is gonna be hard to do, and I still think in an elementary classroom, it's gonna lead to the definition of a lot of kids as being close contacts, but they're saying they really want schools to try to make an assessment of, did every student, who are the students who actually met this definition of being within six feet of distance for at least 15 minutes? And not just make random blanket assessments of, okay, since you're, you're all in the same class, you're automatically at close contact. As I said, and it's gonna be a hard thing to do, but I wanted to talk about that guidance. And, and the other piece about this guidance where I think I've gotten a lot of questions about, is that whole concept, which I think people disagree with the guidance, which they certainly can, people can disagree with the guidance, but the guidance is, the guidance from the Department of Health and from the Department of Education, is you are only a close contact if you've been in contact with the person who's tested positive. Just because you've been in contact with a close contact, that doesn't make you a close contact, if that makes sense. So you don't become a close contact because I, Andy doesn't become a close contact because I was defined as a close contact. He only becomes a close contact by.
Direct.
Direct, directly having contact with the person who was positive. And some people feel like that is too narrow of a definition, but the, the reality of the other close contact definition is, and I keep saying this, I use this phrase a lot, it becomes the domino theory, in essence, then we all become a close contact. And that one positive case would close the school. And there might be discussions around that and what that, what that means, but that's not the definition, that's what the, that's what the guidance says you have to do. And they tried to, they wanted to make that really clear. So I don't know about any thoughts on the definition of close contact?
Seeing none.
This is a little bit different, and, and it's, and it makes a little more, this makes it a little more difficult on schools. Policy of when a close contact may return to school. A close contact should be tested, but must self-quarantine for 14 days after the last exposure to a person who tested positive. So even if you were a close contact and you tested negative, you still cannot return to school for 14 days, because they're saying that it takes that long for someone to become positive. So you could have a negative test, you could be a close contact, three days later have a negative test, but then still become ill seven days later. So they're saying that if, once you're defined as a close contact, then why don't you go get a test? Which is, I could, you could argue, well, why do that if it's how they have to stay home for 14 days anyhow? But, so the argument is get a test, stay home for 14 days. After further consultation with the medical community, we are updating this guidance as the virus can be, can cause illness from two to 14 days after exposure, and even asymptomatic individuals can transmit the virus. Going forward, even if an individual identifies a close contact, receives a negative test result, they must still quarantine. Which before, the previous guidance was if you got a negative test result, you could return to school. So this is actually a more restrictive guideline. A less restrictive guideline, so it's somewhat more restrictive, but the first one's less restrictive, the second one's more restrictive, the third one's less restrictive. Policy of when student staff may return to school after COVID-19 symptoms. If a student or staff member has COVID-19-like symptoms, they may return to school after they've had, tested negative for COVID-19, have an improvement in symptoms, and have been fever-free for at least 24 hours, without using fever-reducing medications. This is the change in the guidance a little bit. If the provider makes an alternative diagnosis for the COVID-19-like symptoms, the individual may return to school based on the recommendation for the alternative diagnosis. The clearest one here is strep. So you have a sore throat, you go to the doctor, you test positive for strep, you just have to be fever-free for 24 hours, and then you can return to school. You don't have to go through the whole 14-days quarantine, and so if you, if you're diagnosed with something that's not COVID-19, once you are fever-free from that for 24 hours, you can return to school. If a student or staff member presents COVID-19-like symptoms and chooses not to be tested, they may return to school 10 days from the start of symptoms, as long as their symptoms have improved, and they've been without a fever for at least 24 hours. This is also a little bit less restrictive, saying that if you don't get, if you choose not to get, if you choose not to get tested, that you can return 10 days from the start of symptoms as long as you've improved and haven't had a fever in 24 hours. So that, so. Definition of a COVID-19-related fever. Over the summer, the threshold for a COVID-19-related fever by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention was updated from greater than 100.4 to greater than 100. So the new guidance is saying if you have a fever over 100, then you're considered as having a possible COVID-like fever. The rest of this isn't really anything that's new or changing, this is all similar stuff that I felt like is no different than what we've talked about before. So those are the key pieces of this document that I wanted to take a look at and to share with the community.
All right.
Any other questions or thoughts?
All right, Stephanie Clardy has a question?
I do, Stephanie Clardy. So I've had some parents ask if their students are asymptomatic, and they are staying home for the 14 days, and if they're well enough, will those students be able to access any online learning?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to support them, we're gonna have to tune them, we're gonna have to provide educational resources.
Okay, thank you. Parents have been asking, and I just wanted to get an answer for them, so thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have a comment, question, anything? Jen? Okay. I have a question.
Okay.
Andy Cattarelli, on the, on the, being fever-free for 24 hours, will the school be taking temperatures when they come back, or we, this, this?
No, so we're still envision, the school's saying they're not taking temperatures, we're not, we're, we're gonna put out a document to parents about screening, and to staff members, and we're actually gonna ask any, our goal is to limit visitors in the building as much as possible. If a visitor had to come into the building, we're not actually, ask them to answer a question, a series of screening questions, but we're not, at this time, we're not advocating for taking anybody's temperature.
Thank you very much. All right. I lost my page.
Ready, ready to move on?
Yes, let's move on. I'm getting caught, okay. Go ahead.
Metrics on transition between plans or models. The state has established metrics that they're asking school districts to utilize as they make decisions to transition between models. The metric is based upon the number of positive cases over the previous 14 days in your community. Based upon this number, the state is assigning each community a color rating, which this, this time around, the colors have changed, which I always think is a little problematic. So there's red, if your community is red, you have average daily cases per 100,000 is greater than eight, and they actually, their recommendation is that you would transition to remote learning, or be remote learning if you are a red community. Yellow, average daily cases per 100,000 is between four and eight. Their recommendation is that you, the, the community could look at other factors, such as positivity rate, number of cases, and make a determination whether you would be hybrid or remote.
Scott, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, we, you don't have a, the current version of that.
I'm gonna pull it up in a second.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go through the overall ratings, then I'll pull the document out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Green is your average daily cases per 100,000 is less than four, and they would recommend either full-in-person learning or hybrid learning, based on the individual decision of the school committee, and other factors. And the other factors they want to look at, the other factors that have been talked about is positivity rate, and that's in the documents, we'll look, we'll take a look at that for COVID. And then the, in my background, it says white, but this week they've changed it to gray. So white or gray is fewer than five total cases in the past 14 days, and, and the recommendation would be. And the recommendation would be full in-person learning or a hybrid. This data is going to be released weekly on Wednesdays. I have the, so I'll look at this most recent report from this Wednesday. We'll take a look at it in a second. And I think it would make sense that we would review this data as part of our bi-weekly meetings. And then start thinking about coming up with a transition plan because we had talked about making that transition of, you know, possibly bringing in K1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, et cetera, if we stay, if we stay as a gray or white community. So since they've been releasing this report, Carver has been a gray or white community. And then we'll, so we'll take a look at the report from yesterday. Sorry. I'll get there in a second. I need, I need to get a new mouse. I've ordered a new mouse. I know I've had mouse problems for a little bit. My mouse just likes to do funny things sometimes.
Get you a cat.
There we go. You gotta get a cat. All right. So the data looks at the total case count since the beginning of the onset of the virus. So for Carver, that's 67. Carver's down the bottom there. Do you want me to see if I can make this a little bigger? Then I'm going to have to play with it a little bit.
School.
There you go. So Carver's total case count since the beginning is 67. Case count are number of cases in the last 14 days. And that, this is viewed as active cases, is my understanding of this. And so who, how many people in Carver are currently actively ill with COVID-19? And the number here is less than five. I'm not exactly sure why. If the number is one, two, three, or four, they don't give a number. So you either get zero, less than five, or if it's above five, you get a number. So if you're like a born, born has six. But, so I don't know the rationale behind that. Based on looking at these 14 days, they give you an average daily incident rate per 100,000. For Carver, that's 1.8. The recommendation would be, they would be looking for that to be under four, to stay gray or white. And if it's above four, you'd go to yellow. If it's above eight, you'd go to red. So you'd see on this page, Canton is yellow because their rate was five. Brockton is red because their rate was 8.4. Relative change since the last count, Carver was higher. Then they do the number of total tests of Carver residents since the beginning of the pandemic, which is 2,533. The number of tests of Carver residents in the last 14 days was 359. Of those 359 tests, there were three positive in Carver. So it gives you a positive, percentage of positivity of .84. The recommendation here from the World Health Organization is that areas that have a percentage of positivity below 5% would be, should continue on their reopening, or would be okay to reopen. So the guidelines, the thresholds we use in this document, and then that's a little higher than last week. Our total positive test case last week in this document was two. So we went from two to three. So that gives us a rate of being higher than we were last week. And so the benchmarks that you're looking at here, what we would look at would be the average daily incident rate per 100,000, looking for that to be under four, whether they consider it as a positive trend. Total number of positive cases in the last 14 days. So, you know, looking at that number, just get a sense if, you know, there's been a lot, you know, looking, looking at Brockton, just looking at the data, Brockton's had 148 positive tests in the last 14 days. And then you want to look at the positivity rate. So in my mind, those would be the numbers we'd be looking at as we went through and started to make a decision, or make decisions in terms of transitioning. You know, obviously, based on where we are, we want to look at this trend data all the time. I don't have a specific recommendation this evening to change what we're planning on doing. Yes, my recommendation would be to stay with the hybrid model that we're planning to do on September 16th. And so my only recommendation is that this, looking at this data just becomes a regular part of our meeting and then establishes some timelines in terms of transitioning. And then obviously, they're recommending if you were to go to red or yellow, that you would at least, the DESI's recommendation, but ultimately, the school committee has the prerogative. And you can make different decisions. The DESI recommendation is that if you go to yellow, you'd have a conversation of hybrid or remote. If you went to red, they're really recommending that you go, transition to remote learning. So that, that's kind of my update on metrics for transition.
All right. Jason first, he has his hand up. Sorry, Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood here. Can you explain the case count? I'm having trouble identifying what's the difference between the case count and the positive counts.
So I would not claim to be an expert on this document. And so maybe it might make sense in the next meeting to even have the health agent or the board of health be part of this discussion.
Okay.
Meeting with the health agent tomorrow. But I'll give you my general understanding of it. My general understanding is that the case count is the number of people who at this, in the last 14 days, who have been actively positive and not considered recovered from COVID-19. So that there's less than five. And like I said, I don't have the rationale as to why they don't give an exact number. You either get zero or less than five. Or if it's above five, you get the real number. So if you go through this document, you'll see that. And the distinction between that and positive tests, my understanding of that, and I think Jen talked about this at the last meeting, is, you know, obviously, those numbers don't conflict with each other right now because even if there were three people actively positive in Carver, that would be under five. But, you know, that's really, some, there are some individuals who in a 14-day period might get tested twice. And if someone tested positive twice, they would count, it's just the number of people tested, the number of positive tests. But that, because there was one week where that data was a little conflicting, where you looked at the case count and the positive tests, and you said, that doesn't make any sense. Those two numbers don't make sense. And that was kind of a rationale that was given. The other rationale was given is that sometimes there are people who do not, might be residing in a nursing home. Their true residence is Carver, and so they'll end up, their positive test, for some reason, comes from Carver, but it doesn't count as an active case coming from Carver. Those are some explanations that have been given to me. But as I said, I do not claim to be an expert on this document. And maybe it would make sense to invite the health agent to go over with this next meeting.
I agree with you. James O'Brien, recognized?
James O'Brien, just a couple of things. I would support that request too, because I think it could be helpful in clarifying. And secondly, I think the map of this chart actually shows almost a clearer presentation of what surrounding communities and the other areas alike, as opposed to looking at it alphabetically. You can see the map itself, and I think it gives a pretty clear picture.
Let me see if, the map might be at the end of the document.
Yeah, it's page 24.
Yeah, the map might be there.
The thing, the thing that you discussed and that, you know, we're looking at is that their recommendation is to go full if you're gray. It's not to go back hybrid. So a lot of communities are choosing the hybrid model, which, which I think is a good idea right now. I would make a request that as we go through this, if we're going to continue to look at this data, that you isolate Carvers and sort of make a separate chart that sort of shows, so when we look at it, we can use it as a reference going back instead of having another possible.
We could keep a Carver all the time.
Yeah.
So we can do, go back and do that.
Yep.
Okay, here's the overall map. Again, sorry that my mouse was just a little fine. So if you look, if you look around Carver, in terms of looking at the map, you know, the only, the red community near us is Brockton. And the yellow community is, what's Tons. Tons.
Two to the left is Lakeville, I believe.
Lakeville. I don't think it's Tons. Tons, Tons is yellow too, though, I think.
Where is Carver on there? I don't even know.
Carver's in between Plymouth and Middleboro.
Carver's in between Middleboro and Plymouth, the two.
The two greens.
The two greens. The two big greens.
Should that be Rainham? Rainham? And yellow? Rainham?
But even those greens are less than four per 100,000.
No, that yellow is Lakeville, I believe.
Is that Lakeville?
Yeah, on the other side of Middleboro is Lakeville.
All right.
It gives you a sense that obviously, there's a little section north of Boston where there's a little congregation of red. You know, so that area has a little bit more prominence right now in terms of, in terms of their case counts.
Okay, anybody else have a comment on the map or the metrics?
All right, so yeah, Gina will work on putting together a, just Carver alone.
Yeah, Carver only.
And showing the map, and then also inviting the health agent to the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Be great, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we're going to FY21 budget update.
Which we're going to turn over to, go back on and turn the mic over to Brad.
Brad, if you could speak right into the mic, please.
All right, so for tonight, I just want to give you guys a quick update on where we stand, which is general FY21 in terms of finances coming into the town in addition to a couple of different sub-areas. So for FY21 so far, while Mass does not have an approved official FY21 budget, the governor has made a commitment at the minimum funding level for Chapter 70. And the goal right now is to add $107 million on top of Chapter 70. With Carver, with Carver, excuse me, being unfortunately held harmless, we do not see any benefit to the increase besides the per pupil funding amount. And to be honest with you, I don't even have that. Is it $30, Scott? Do you remember what that was? I looked at so many numbers, I forget what it originally was.
And it was about $47,000, I guess.
Okay. Grand total. With that being said, also, we've seen a spike in charter school numbers. That number has not been published by DESI yet, but that is going to impact our state aid. And we have, in meetings with the town officials, we have brought forward that concern, and they are making a budget adjustment on their side that will, what we expect to match what that estimation is. Again, the end of the day, when charter school numbers increase, the state does reimburse you a percentage for that first year that the child moves out, the second and the third. But reality is, that number keeps growing, and that's a larger assessment to the town that actually comes off our total of state aid. I'm sure we'll review that in more depth at our joint meeting. And also, in addition to the state aid, we're still reviewing local receipts. When talking to Meg Lemay, the finance director for the town, she said July's FY21 numbers are lagging behind FY20 originals or actuals. So that's just something to be aware of. And that'll again be brought up in our overall meeting with the joint, joint meeting between the two boards. And just to catch you guys up, there's been a continued work in progress between the school administration and the town administrators. And we're hopeful, again, to avoid any FY21 reductions. Obviously, Chapter 70 coming in at a minimum, if not a little bit higher level funding for FY20, that certainly helps. But there may be a discussion about local receipts and where we are and what our plan long-term is. Meals Tax is a prime example. We all know Meals Tax isn't going to be the same as what it was for FY20. So that's just another area that we've been discussing. In our preliminary numbers, we've taken note of, but just a few things that they may be impacted for local receipts. Any questions on that piece? It's pretty straightforward. CARES Act money. So approximately $1 million was earmarked for Carver, of which $189,000 had no restrictions to certain departments. So the $110,000 had a few, like council on aging, veterans benefits, a few things like that that can't be assessed by every department. But $189 can be assessed by absolutely everyone throughout the town. So while items are keen to be submitted, the school department, we are getting tight unavailable funds. There is a rumor that more funds may be made available. But again, right now, the hard number we have that we're working with is that $890,000 figure, which again, is disappearing very quickly. To date, many items, such as technology, PPE, facility, and educational equipment have been purchased, and still, some needs to be encumbered. But overall, we're in good shape with PPE. We got ahead of that. And again, there's a few things that are coming up as we get back in the swing of things and kids are coming back and teachers are saying, I need this for individual student needs. We are continuing to purchase those. Skip the page here. Positions and licenses. So this was an original question that we had, and we directed this right to the Plymouth County Treasurer. You can only charge things that are, so even if we purchased a full year of license upfront and it was due to COVID, we can only charge the expense up to 12/31. So every bill we submit, we have to actually only submit a portion of that for the coverage up to December 31st. So a lot of things that we have purchased, unfortunately, we are going to have to pick up on our regular budget. Again, it's not a crazy number. It's probably 20 to 30 grand right now, but that's just something to be aware of. But that ties in more importantly to the bullet below is, at this time, we can charge a salary and benefits for the additional middle high school nurse and the two custodial positions. There's going to be one in each building, as those are tied directly to COVID. But as of December 31st, there's no available funding to cover those after that point. That if we determine to keep in our budget, which I think we're going to have to, based on this whole year, that we would need to somehow find, either it's using school choice funds available, or if there's money that's been allocated in our budget that's freed up for operating expenses, we can journal entry that over. But again, just the update on that. And we'll definitely keep you guys in the loop of that once December comes, because those need to be approved actually in the operating budget if we are to source funds from there. Any questions on CARES money? All right.
Seeing none.
Transportation. Given the seating requirements for our vehicles, our out-of-district budget may see a deficit balance. We're just starting to look at routing for that and specifics. And we, we've posted, we've asked parents if they, if the student is on IEP, we actually can reimburse the parent if they decide to transport the student. So we're hopeful a lot of parents grab that. That'll free up some of our drivers for the routes and consolidate down our routes. But with only being two to three per seat on a 7D vehicle going to the out-of-district tuitions, unfortunately, they may come at a very high expense. I'll give you the case right now. We have two students that are being transported in one vehicle. That cost was $350 per day. So that's eating into, that's a third of our budget right there for special ed transportation that isn't even accounting for a quarter of our student population. So again, just to be aware of that. I don't know exactly where that number's going to fall. Everyone gives you different quotes, but it was hard to find vendors before COVID. And it's going to be even harder now, and we're going to be paying a premium rate because they can't cost share and ride share with other districts. So there's, with the limit of two to three per vehicle, that may impact us budget-wise. So just to keep a note of that, and I'll keep you guys in the loop of that. Update on where we are for our general routes. Routes are being developed as we speak. And based on the information turned back from parents, we're anticipating at a max, there will be 18 kids per bus. And that's much lower in some cohorts. Some of the numbers we got back, I'm thinking, are probably going to be around, it could be as few as 15 kids per, per full regular passenger, 71-passenger student bus.[1626.56] The good thing about that is they includes, the people we are going to build in these routes, they include kids who are actually remote right now that have filled out the form that may come back. So not only are we going to have those students allocated on the bus already, but we also have ability to add on up to 23 passengers total. So there's room for growth on those routes designs, which absolutely is a positive for that. The other side of that, though, is that I know at the elementary level, we may need to look at probably drop-off windows for parents, because if there is 150, 200 cars, they're going to have to do it in separate drop-off time periods. So we're working on logistics of that. That'll go out to parents as well. As Scott mentioned before, hopefully, routes will be established a week prior to school, and we will publish those on the website, and we can also shoot those out in an email blast to, to all parents. And just a note, the stop-arm cameras have been installed, and just a reminder, do not pass school vehicles when their lights are flashing red. Food service update, the seamless summer option, which was the, the option we elected to go into once COVID started up through the end of the school year last year, has been extended for Carver. So we've been approved from September 1st all the way up to our first day of school. So from September 1st all the way through September 14th, Carver's approved for SSO, and that, this is the key piece on this, that is eligible, all students are eligible, no matter what your designation is, whether you are free, or you are reduced, or you are fully paid, that meal option is completely free for you. So we've established a couple of dates here and times that students can pick up multiple meals for the week, and also, there's going to be breakfast for that as well. So from 11:30 to 12:30 at the elementary school, same as we did before in front of the building, on September 2nd, 8th, 10th, and 14th. Also, our food service director has been working, I was on email chain today with the Chief Weston at the fire department, and we're hopeful right now that one of these dates will actually be able to have students go through the fire station as a pickup point. We thought it would be a good way to get our kids interested back into the food service program, and what better way to drive through the, the fire station, see what's going on, and, and pick up your meal for the day. So we're trying to get families engaged with the food service department by doing that. I don't have the exact date on that, but that will be one of the four dates that we mentioned right there. Once we return back to school, in-person will be exactly the same. At the bottom, I'll just jump to this point, there's been no word on USDA about a universal free lunch, so everything right now will have to be paid, free, or reduced, and we charge your account, obviously, if you're reduced or paid. So that is one, I'm hopeful that changes, and we're hopeful we do get universal free, but I think, from my perspective, every day that goes by that we don't hear back, I'm a little bit concerned that that's not going to be the case. But once we return in person, breakfast is going to be available, it's going to be like a grab and go, but there's no go. You're going to grab it, and you can sit in the cafeteria at both schools, eat your breakfast, and then head back to the class. And then lunch, we're still going to maintain a hot and cold option. We're hopeful numbers are high enough that we can maintain both throughout the year, but that's something we're going to monitor as we go on. Catch on this too, is they changed this year the regs that for any day that, even for half-days, you used to not be, have to provide meals, that has now changed that you have to provide meals. With that, though, we can offer a meal program to go, so the students can take home a lunch if they opt into it, to go on the bus as they go. It's not like you have to actually serve the meal and have them eat it in the school. So that's something we have to, we have to look at as well. For remote meals, we're still working on a schedule right now, but the plan would be have the meals for pickup on set hours on Mondays and Wednesdays. Obviously, if those days didn't work out for someone, or they prefer to pick up their meal, they can definitely contact the food service department, and we can work on that with them. But the goal would be to get the most of our meals out on Monday and Wednesday. Families, where you have set hours, they come pick up, and then they're on their way. And that is for, if you're in hybrid remote, or you're in full remote, either option, you can come grab your meal. The only difference is that you'd actually have to give your, you have to sign it out. So you have to, because we can't get the universal free, we have to take a note of who actually to charge, who took a free meal if they're free in that regard. So with that being said, there's a lot of work still going on with this, and the other option too that is possible that we're looking at right now, is the send home on Cohort A on Tuesday, we could send them home with meals for the week, and on Friday, possibly sending them home for meals for the next, their, in, in remote days on, for Cohort B, the remote days on Monday through Wednesday. Still being determined if that can be possible, but right now, we believe that that's an option that we can do, and if parents opt to that, we can certainly send lunches home on Friday. So a lot going on. We're definitely, I think our email blast out went today, out to families noting the SSO on top, but once we have defined dates, we'll certainly send that out to parents and let them know specifics on the pickups.
All right, Stephanie, go ahead.
Stephanie Clarity. Brad, who, if people wanted to, who could they advocate to try to get that SSO program extended? Who makes that decision?
I'd probably send it to, so USDA does. Who is good contact for them? I really don't know.
Okay, but it would be, it wouldn't be any of our local?
No, and our local, our local honestly is advocating for it, so it's not like there's not application on that, on that part, but to be honest with you, the USDA, I don't know if they'd really look at a letter to in-depth, but let me, let me take a note, and I will follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Does anybody else have any questions about transportation or the budget update for Brad? No? I have one, Brad. Andy Carter-Lee. Have you or Scott been in contact with Police Chief Dufly about the stop, stop-arm camera procedures?
We reached out back when we first were talking about them, to get them installed, that. We can pull, how it works is a, it's, it's all stored on a computer chip. That computer chip's pulled, Maureen enters in her computer, it prints off, I think it saves up for 30 hours, so, and after infraction occurs, we definitely will have the coverage on it. And actually, only even the, the camera goes as soon as the lights, it hits ignition. So the, the frame on that, we could have probably 15 days' worth of film footage saved on that camera, but obviously, if something happens, the, we hope our drivers right away come back and tell us. So you take that chip, you would plug it in your computer, you actually can take a little snippet video of the infraction, and that's what we would send to Chief Dufly. That would then in turn send the ticket out. But in terms of talking, since it's, honestly, since we've installed them, we have not. We've been getting pulled.
So my intention is to set up a meeting with the chief for next week. We actually have a couple of issues to discuss, so I, I'll put this on the agenda of one of the, one of our topics of discussion.
Great, thank you very much. Also, back on, on buses, have you allocated time for the cleaning regimen between, between runs?
Yeah, so the whole start to finish, it takes about 15 minutes to spray, and it takes 10 minutes of that is allocated to drying. So after they drop off, let's say at the morning at the high school, if they drop off at 7:05, by 7:15, they could technically have, I shouldn't say 7:15, by 7:20, they could have their first pickup, and everything's dry on the seat. So that lag time in between, honestly, is going to be fine in terms of, they spray, they're on the road, as long as that first pickup's not within 10 minutes of the final spray, we're all set.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Let's go down here. That was going to leave my screen.
Yeah, so our, our next topic is the plan for the 10 professional development days for teachers and staff outside next weekend. Meredith is going to take us through that presentation.
Thank you. So while that gets loaded, I'm going to speak a little bit loudly for people that are here in the audience, and in the hopes that everyone on Zoom can hear me. I just wanted, before I started, to just recognize the fact that this year, we are granted a gift in being able to have 10 days for professional development, but that gift comes with an incredible amount of collaboration and coordination to make sure that we have been able to integrate the input and requests from a variety of constituents. So I just want to really quickly acknowledge the fact that the reopening committee, the reopening subcommittees, administrators, our district nurses, our instructional coaches, our department chairs, the technology department, Jane Kent, teachers, and ESPs have all been integral in helping start to etch out what the 10 days will look like. So with that said, we're going to get into the presentation, thank you. To give a little bit of background about the considerations, in developing our 10-day plan, we responded to the decreased length of the school year as put forth by the DESE and BESE, as they changed the, the length of the school year to 170 days to allow for these 10 professional development days at the start of the school year. We also have outlined both universal and differentiated trainings based on building and/or assignment of the staff member or faculty member. What that means is that we are trying to make sure that we have professional development that is appropriate for those teachers that are returning back in person, as well as being able to provide support for our elementary remote hybrid teachers, and have some training for our full remote teachers, our ESPs, and then thinking about other roles like substitutes, bus drivers, monitors, that sort of thing. We also wanted to make sure that we adapted professional development to the unique nature of reopening this year. With that said, we wanted to make sure that there were opportunities to keep people safe and socially distanced throughout, and that we offered a combination of asynchronous learning and small groups. So with that said, I'm going to get into some of the details right now, and hopefully you can hear me. So before I get into our plan for the first 10 days, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some asynchronous opportunities that we've had. I think a number of teachers have participated in their own professional learning and growth throughout the summer, and some have reached out to us and asked how they can best prepare, and have shared some requests for resources. One of those requests came through one of our reopening subcommittees, where they asked about adding a feature to our social emotional resource site with return-to-school resources for supporting students in this new normal. So with that said, Scott is going to hopefully log in and be able to show that. But a team got together over the past month and worked on answering this question, how can I support a student transitioning back to school? And with that, came up with these four different areas to help support teachers. This site is live for teachers, and it became live yesterday, and an email was sent out, and we've already had 33 users go in and read the resources that are available there. As, as users click on these different boxes, there are a plethora of resources that help with establishing routines, being?
Want me to open one up?
Sure, thank you.
Do you have a preference?
You can do build student classroom relationships if you want to, we're prioritizing, yep, great. So, for example, building student and classroom relationships, there are a lot of resources available here about how to reimagine the beginning of the school year, how to prioritize social and emotional learning, how to set up a classroom environment with social distancing to be able to build student relationships and classroom culture, and how to prepare students for this new normal after the pandemic. So each one of these is a link that allows anytime, anywhere, learning for any of our staff members, they can go in, and there are sample lessons and current research that's available to them. The other, getting back to PowerPoint, thank you. The other thing that we've done is we've continued to maintain a remote learning playlist for teachers, which provides lots of links related to technology, and then, Scott, if you'll just click the content professional learning link in there, thank you. This page has a lot of curated resources that we've gone through with everything from videos to podcasts to articles, but lots of different resources in a variety of topics. They're related to different content areas and different aspects that our school professionals will interact with, everything from arts and culture to universal design for learning. And again, this is available to all of our faculty and staff anytime that they're interested. So we've had lots of positive feedback on these resources as well. Moving into professional learning, starting next Monday when we welcome teachers back, we have a bunch of universal trainings planned and prioritized for the first week of school. Those include health and safety trainings, they will be conducted by district nurses during the first week, and they also will be performed in small groups that are socially distanced. We have said, in working with the nurses, they said groups of 20 or less in large spaces, and so we'll be able to accommodate that, and we have that all set up. This will cover COVID-related health and safety, including PPE, as well as EpiPen and other health-related trainings. We'll also have trainings on what I'm calling the mechanics of reopening, for lack of a better term, but those are trainings for teachers where building administration can talk about and work with teachers on what it will look like to get students in the building. So transitions such as building traffic patterns, hallways, bathroom use, going to and from lunchrooms, arrival dismissal, that would include both parent drop-off and pickup and bus arrival and dismissal. So that's an example of some of the universal trainings. Additionally, we have beginning of the year trainings. This year, you're aware that we are wrapping up our migration to a new and improved student information system called Aspen, so teachers will be able to get trained in Aspen. We will also be doing a training on something called ClassLink, which will help expedite a variety of technology tools that we have. This is actually a single sign-on system, which means that when a teacher or a student logs in, that they have access to all of the different apps that they normally have to log into. This includes kindergarten, where they may log into something like Google Classroom or Brain Pop, and they'll have a quick card that they can just scan, so that way their little fingers don't have to type in a password, and they'll be able to access all of their secure accounts. We also will go through our typical beginning of the year trainings, and obviously, they will be modified as necessary in order to accommodate this new reopening. So policies and procedures, things like anti-bullying, confidentiality and FERPA, restraint training, special education processes, 504s, harassment, civil rights, the type of things that we typically do in the beginning of the year. The other thing that each building is doing is they're taking advantage of building-based opportunities to work on restoring the culture of community amongst staff and faculty in a socially-distanced manner. It's been a long time since we've all been together, and I've heard a lot of people that are really excited to see one another, so the idea is to make sure that people feel like they're part of the great community that they've always worked in, despite the fact that we're in this different format. And so both building principals have spent a lot of time in helping plan that piece as well. And then to that, we segue into social emotional learning, and we'll have some district-wide training from Joel Rastusia on trauma-sensitive reopening, and then the elementary will also be getting training from Julie Love, who is the Director of the McLean School Nurse Liaison Project. And then we move into the bulk of the second week of training, which really has to do with preparing for teaching and learning. This will be done less at a whole-school level and more differentiated based on department or grade level. At the middle high school, there was a request this summer through our subcommittees that in moving to a block schedule, that we do block schedule training for teachers so that they can learn how to repace their curriculum to fit a semesterized experience, so we'll be having that, as well as department and curriculum opportunities to adjust pacing, modification of scope and sequence, and then, this is another example, but even things like how to design the weight room so everything is socially-distanced and cleaned, and ways to be able to prepare for students to come back. There will also be technology integration that is done based on the needs of each department. At the elementary school, we will have grade-level opportunities to reimagine and think about Bridges Math. That particular curriculum resource has spent a lot of time preparing resources for teachers for all three models, and we're in our second year of implementation in K through 2, our first year of implementation in 3 through 5, and so we want to make sure that there's ample time for teachers to think about how to approach that curriculum in a hybrid model, as well as English Language Arts, History, Social Science, and Science, so we'll have opportunities to do that, and make sure that there is coordination with our hybrid remote teachers, so that students have a positive experience both in-person and on hybrid remote days. Additionally, we'll also be doing screen casting and video trainings and other technology trainings, but I wanted to make sure that I listed the screen casting training, as the outcome will be virtual welcomes or parent orientation that teachers will create, and that way can send out in advance so that students can see their teacher, see what their classroom will be looking like, and will feel prepared for their first in-person And then lastly, we will have ESP trainings throughout the 10 days, they'll be participating in our universal trainings, our asynchronous opportunities, our IEP reviews, Google Classroom, Aspen, our SEL trainings, and our policy and procedure opportunities. So I just, in, in conclusion, I just want to, again, thank the many, many people that have been involved with this process and who have offered feedback. There's additional feedback that's been coming in today, as we've worked with department chairs and some additional requests, so we're trying to meet those and make sure that the 10 days go swimmingly.
Thank you, Meredith.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Does anybody have any comment or question on?
Stephanie Clarity, I want to make a comment. I know, I'm sure everyone's shocked. Meredith, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, I know that there are a lot of people that have been, you know, spending time and energy into this, but I know how much you have put into this personally as yourself, and I just want to say thank you so much to you, and thank you to everyone that has contributed. I'm just, I'm so grateful that our teachers and our staff will have all of these resources, and I thank you very much for presenting this, because I think that this will make a lot of people feel a little bit more comfortable knowing what's coming up in those 10 days of PD. So thank you very much for going through this as in-depthly as you did tonight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I totally concur. I mean, I was, I was listening to you when I was looking through the presentation, and I'm just thinking to myself, this is so comprehensive and complete and professionally done, and I'm sure it'll be, as Stephanie said, a very welcome resource for our teachers.
for our teachers and our parents. I mean, just a, just a parent's guide to Google, to Google Classroom. I think that would be invaluable just by itself. But, uh, thank you, Meredith.
You're welcome, and thanks again to everyone that has helped.
Yes. Okay, going forward, recommendations from the superintendent.
Okay, I do, I do have one recommendation tonight. Our nurse leader, Karen Schoen, has asked us to update the administration of medication policy on medications that nurses can give to our students under what's called a standing order from the school physician, Dr. Borstein. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, pediatricians are advocating that school nurses be able to give students Tylenol, Ibuprofen, Benadryl, and calcium carbonate Tums. The current policy only allows for the administration of Tylenol under what's considered or called a standing order. The school district has actually already received standing orders from Dr. Borstein for the above-listed medications, but currently, the school district policy only allows for the administration of Tylenol. So, the policy update here is we would just be adding Ibuprofen, Benadryl, and calcium carbonate to the list of medications that can be distributed under a standing order. Parents still have to sign off as part of the emergency card process for the approval that those medications be administered under the standing order. Once they have that signed off, the nurse can do that at any time. So, you know, usually for policies, we have two readings. You know, so the committee could take one of two options, say, they could, you know, consider this the first reading of the policy, bring it back on September 10th, and vote for approval. The committee always has the option to waive a second reading, and if the committee decides to do that, then we could just have a motion, a vote on the policy as we ran adding Ibuprofen, Benadryl, and calcium carbonate as medications that could be distributed under a standing order from the school's physician.
Okay.
I make a motion to waive the second reading and approve the policy changes for the JLCD policy for the administration of medications.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do you have any comments on this, or questions or anything? Okay, so, just as an aside, I will look at my, my fellow policy subcommittee member. Do you have any, any problem waiving the second reading over this and voting?
Uh, Stephanie Clarity, no, I do not have any issues with that.
Okay, I'm Andy Cattarelli, sorry, focused on Zoom. All right, so we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote to waive the second reading. We'll start with Stephanie. Stephanie Clarity.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
Andy Cattarelli, aye. All right, passes unanimously. Reports from the school committee. Reports from the school committee. Does anybody have anything before we adjourn? Any comments? Okay, Jen Pratt.
Jennifer Pratt. I think I've said this every meeting, but I feel like it's still so important to say. I want to say thank you to, to Scott and the entire admin team, including Meredith, and Gina, and Brad, and Ruby, and Mike, and the other APs. So much time and effort has gone into preparing for school this year, probably more than any other year. And as a school committee member, and as a parent, and as a member of the town of Carver, I am just so happy to be a part of a community that cares this much about, about our schools, and everybody inside the schools, teachers, students, staff, and everybody has taken so much time to just show care and consideration. To our teachers who are returning to school next week, I want to say thank you. We appreciate you. You are what makes our schools great. I know my kids are so excited to get back and see teachers, and I wish you guys the best of luck next week as you get underway, and I just want to thank you all for all that you do. I know a lot of teachers have worked over the summer on their own time, and, you know, this is a, I think Scott said it a bunch of times, like, this is unprecedented. We hope we never have to plan for a school year like this again, but, um, I, I just, from the bottom of my heart, want to say thank you to everybody. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Jen. Jason, Stephanie? No, Jake? Okay.
I'm good, thanks.
Um, Stephanie Clarity, I just want to agree with everything that Jen said. This is a tremendous undertaking by everyone involved in the Carver School District, and I'm so grateful to be a part of it, and our community is unique, and I, I love the fact that everyone has truly, as Scott had mentioned earlier, been so respectful throughout this entire process. It's scary. It's uncertain, and we're all aware of that, and I'm just so proud that everyone has been able to work through their fears and work through that uncertainty and face that in a respectful manner, and in a way that has truly allowed people to collaborate and share ideas and, and mold how things are going to go. And I'm just so, so appreciative, and like I said, grateful. So, I wish everyone the best week they can possibly have, getting back into the buildings next week. We are here, so I just want to continue to send a message to, to families, teachers and staff, that if you have questions, if you have concerns, please reach out. There's been a tremendous amount of outpour from the community that I know I've received and other committee members I've received, and we welcome that, and we're thankful to hear from you. We're here to advocate for you. We're here to help you get the answers that you need, as is Mr. Neef and the building administrations, and I just wanted to say thank you. And then, on a positive note, I happened to see online that the Carver High School girls and boys' basketball team are having a free car wash this Saturday at the police station from 11 to 1. It's a free car wash, but they're accepting donations, so if you happen to be around, please stop by to show them some support, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Stephanie, was that September 9th, or was that this Saturday?
This Saturday.
This Saturday?
11 to 1.
I thought it was September 9th, so, okay, great. I don't have much more to add to that. I want to wish everybody a happy reopening, and just for the community to know that we are here. We are monitoring the situation. If changes need to be made, we will make them based on the data. I would like to also recognize our administrative team, who's done so much work, and, and our superintendent, Scott Neef, who likes to thank everybody else, but he deserves just a ton of thanks, because he's been so accommodating and so willing to just go the extra mile with, for not only for us, but the entire community and staff and parents, and, Scott, I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and I do appreciate, I do appreciate that. As I said, I really appreciate the support of the entire community during this process, and again, thank you to our entire staff, all the work they've done around us.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so, that's it. I would entertain a motion to leave regular session to go to executive session, and not, not to return.
And not to return to regular session.
Stephanie Clarity, I make a motion to end the public session, to go into executive session, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote. Stephanie Clarity?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
Andy Cattarelli, aye. All right, we are adjourned 8:41. Thank you very, thank you, everybody, for watching us. Thank you, Area 58, for coming and taping this for us and having us go live. Really appreciate Rich and all of his staff, and we will see you on September 10th at our next meeting. Thank you.